Good evening and welcome to the Wednesday, March 20th, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education. Do I have a motion to open the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Kelly Costa, Kelly Wolf and Iden.
Here.
Here.
And to Miranda, and to Miranda, and to Miranda.
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan.
Here.
Please go to the far right, just behind you.
Thank you very much. Do I have a motion to recess into executive session? We have CSEA administrative contractual matters as well as student matter to discuss.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We are recessed. Do I have a motion to reopen the March 20th, 2024 Regular Business Meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Michelle, would you do a roll call, please?
Kelly Costa, Kelly Wolf and Iden.
Here.
Here.
And to Miranda, and to Miranda, and to Miranda.
Here.
Robert C. Sullivan.
Here.
Please go to the far right, just behind you.
Thank you. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. We have one set of minutes to accept. Those are the minutes from the February 28th, 2024 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. At this time, if any member of the board would like to address the public, they may approach the podium.
Other way around.
Oh, we're going to address you all night long. Sorry. If any member of the public would like to address the board, you may approach the podium. Please identify yourself by name. And just a reminder, you may address the board with questions, et cetera. The superintendent or the board vice president will respond possibly during the remainder of the meeting. The podium, yes, to the podium.
Can I give you advice? We have a brief gift from the foundation. Why don't we do that?
Oh.
And then you guys can all be together. No, it's fine. I just better that way for you. Okay.
Good evening. My name is Jerome Valenti and I'm a trustee of the Harrison Educational Foundation. It's my pleasure to present this check on behalf of the Harrison Educational Foundation to the Harrison Central School District. The foundation has approved a grant submitted by Dr. Lisa Mulhall and Dr. Maggie Conrad to go towards classroom library enhancements as part of the International Baccalaureate Primary Years Program. This enhancement to our children's libraries is meant to revitalize the classroom libraries with books that are engaging, developmentally appropriate, and will provide high success for children throughout the elementary schools and will be rolled out across grades, kindergarten through fifth, throughout the district. Tonight, Hef presents you with this check for $25,000 towards this great program. Hef is a proud supporter of the Harrison Central School District and our children's education. We would like to thank all those who continue to support Hef so we can turn it, so we can in turn support our schools. And we thank you, Dr. Wool, the Board of Education, for continuing to provide our students with the academic excellence that they receive here in Harrison. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Bravo. We're going to do a photo op, if you don't mind, Jerome. Brian, would you just, or Mrs. Berzey will beat me up if we don't get this picture. $25,000 to support elementary classroom libraries. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And I just have a funny feeling that Mr. Iladslavich and Tyler Berzey want to talk to us about Relay for Life, and then we'll get to the other stuff.
My name is Tyler Berzey and I am the vice president of Relay for Life. On March 7th, we held our annual kickoff event for Relay for Life. This year, we did a teacher-to-teacher basketball game, which had a great turnout of hundreds of students and a lot of faculty. We were able to raise $7,000 and bring the Harris community together for a great cause. We want to thank the teachers, PTA, Board of Education, as well as everyone who helped with making this event such as success. Our big event is on Saturday, June 1st, from 6:00 PM to 10:00 PM. We look forward to seeing everyone there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Tyler.
Thank you. Great job. A lot of fun. You can go home and study now. You do not have to stay.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to speak, address the board, you may approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Amy Lammendorf. I live in West Harrison. I have a son named Jace in second grade at Purchase and a daughter named Dylan who is an incoming kinder owner in the fall. My daughter has special needs and she's going to be going to Parson's in the fall as part of the communications class. My son also has special needs as well and is currently in the process of being reevaluated through the district to figure out what setting is best for him as he's currently in a Gen Ed classroom, but he's struggling greatly both academically and emotionally. Of course, my main priority is my son's success, both academically and emotionally. The current second grade class at Purchase consists of all Gen Ed classes, does not currently have an ICT, as all of you know. I believe the ICT model would benefit not only my son, but a number of other children in his grade at Purchase who are currently struggling with the Gen Ed setting. I'm very sympathetic to the barriers that we face in terms of funding, staffing, logistics, but I believe opening an ICT on this grade level would alleviate the struggles my son and many other like him in his grade are currently facing. I'm willing to do whatever it takes to help my son be successful, and I know that for some families, this can mean going to another school in the district that has an opening. However, I fear that if I were to move him to another school in third grade, it would leave him at a disadvantaged, disadvantaged socially and emotionally. He's struggling with anxiety, among other things, and my belief is that the last thing he should have to do is to be ripped from his community and go to another. I doubt that this transition, I do not doubt that this transition can be seamless for some, but not all. I do hope you're able to closely analyze the data of the children on this grade level at Purchase, including their MAP scores, formal and informal assessments administered by their teachers, and other classroom data, and see the needs of this grade at Purchase. We're really incredibly lucky to have a phenomenal teacher in Ann Toko. She's absolutely amazing, and I'm grateful to work with the work she does every day for my son. I do hope next year we're able to provide an ICT class so that my son and others like him can find success. As our district mission echoes, it is of the utmost importance to raise responsible citizens who have compassion and care for all people, including those who are neurodivergent, and I'd hope we can continue to create an exceptional example of that at Purchase. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lammendorf. It appears that is our public participation.
I will respond in my update, just so everybody knows, we're not, just not listening.
Thank you very much. I particularly, I want to thank again on behalf of the board, the Harrison Educational Foundation for their incredible generosity and support. Their support across every aspect of this district has really been transformative, and we're very grateful to them, to their volunteer leadership, which runs the foundation as well as the many members of the community who support all of their fundraising endeavors. And I also want to encourage on behalf of the board, everyone to support Relay for Life in June. It is one of the really most, it's an incredibly fun event, but I think what's most important is it brings the entire Harrison community together, not just students and faculty in our schools, but the rest of the community for an incredibly important fundraising opportunity. I have some good news to share. We want to congratulate the students who participated in the Science Olympiad, who placed fourth in their regional competition this past weekend. For the third year in a row, they have qualified for the New York State Championship, which will take place in Syracuse, New York, and we will update you on their accomplishments there. For the very first time in Harrison High School history, one of our students, Alec Udell, a senior at the high school, placed in the top two of the Junior Science Humanities Symposium, and he has qualified for the national competition in Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I look for, we look forward to updating on his success. The debate team continues on. Congratulations to Jack Gessner, who qualified for the National Speech and Debate Association Championship. He also placed sixth at the National Digital Speech and Debate Championship. So the debate team just continues on. Our DECA, for those of you who don't know, that's the business club out of the high school. We had 16 students in the top 10. I'm not sure how that number works, but I'm sure that's higher math. We had five students qualify for nationals. Olivia Napparano in first, Nolan Simmons in first, Addison Valente in second, Eva Popescu in fifth, and Jonathan Lewis in fifth. I actually had some students in DECA. I think that's probably in different areas of the competition.
Yes, there are 10, 10, 10 different categories.
Yes, that's right.
And we had 16 people in the top 10.
Got it. 16 in the top 10 across the categories. And huge congratulations to Mr. Santo. He was awarded the New York DECA Honorary Life Award. He has been a fearless leader of the DECA club, which has grown significantly over the past years under his leadership. So congratulations to him for that recognition and also for running a really fantastic program. The spring season is just getting underway. The spring athletics season is just getting underway. Mr. Galano held his regular, his spring athletics meeting for parents this past Monday, which was incredibly well attended. So thank you to him and all of the coaches moving forward. I'm sure there will be many more updates as the spring seasons get off to an official start after spring break. And just a reminder that school, schools are closed next week for the spring break holiday, and we will be back and up and running after that. With that, Dr. Wool, I will pass it over to you.
All right, thanks. We have a lengthy program tonight, but I'm going to start by trying to address some of what you raised, Amy, at your moment at the podium there. I'm sure delighted you just stand up there and do that. First of all, let me start by saying, depending on what you know about us, is how you make your determination as to what we are as a district. When I came here in 1999, we had almost 100 students that were outplaced. During my tenure, almost all of them have come back. We've created programs in all six of our schools. Not all those programs are the same because our kids sometimes have divergent needs, and in order to build a program that we can sustain, we have to collect those kids. We try as hard as we can, whenever possible, not to remove a child from their home school. That is one of our most sacred priorities. Sometimes it's not possible. How we determine co-teaching has changed as well. When I came in 1999, special education students were housed in two buildings only, the Parsons School and the Preston School. We're not sure why, but that's the way it was done. We have changed all of that. We have co-teaching throughout our district, throughout our middle school, high school, including in our IB program. For me to promise you something, that one child developing a need at a grade level would result in putting co-teaching in that school would be dishonest because it's just not sustainable or viable. But we do every single year, and I'm so glad you mentioned the assessments, because one of the things we pride ourselves on is not judging kids solely on test results, because those can be very misleading. Children can demonstrate understanding in so many other ways. And Mrs. Sapola, who was a teacher, actually, at Purchase School, is infinitely well-prepared to do that. But we're in the process now of going through our CSEs. We will make a determination. We will look district-wide, Dr. Leydwick and I, and Mrs. Toscano, we will look at every child and try to determine where can we have the least disruption and the most benefit. But I can give you an example of my frustration. So several years ago, we had third grade, for whatever reason, there were two kids in one building and one in each of the other two buildings. So three buildings, four kids. Well, realistically, I would have loved to put a child in their home building with a teacher, and that would have resulted in three positions. Unfortunately, it's just not sustainable. It's not viable. What we try to focus on is the quality of the program and to make sure if a child has to move to another school, that we do as much planning with the family and adjusting to the culture before the child gets there as is possible. It doesn't make it any easier. We also try to accommodate whenever we can. Sometimes we have children who, their kids are split up. We allow the kids to be educated together if that's what the family wants, and we provide transportation. But I don't want you to think for one minute that we're not aware of your needs, that we're not going to try as hard as we can to accommodate them to the highest level. If co-teaching is necessary and viable in Purchase School, you won't have to fight for it. We are on the same page here. My oldest daughter, as everybody knows, is publicly autistic, and she went undiagnosed throughout her entire life. And, you know, I'm supposed to be an expert, and I missed it because she was high performing. We have built a school system that is predicated on the idea that every child is unique, and we are trying to build a system that accommodates them in meaningful ways. One of the proudest accomplishments in this organization, and when, if you come to our budget meeting, you'll hear some of this, I don't want to repeat it all, but I like to highlight for people, you know, the elementary level, but when you look across our system, if you look in our highest performing classes, you will see kids that look like all kinds of programs and profiles. So our special education students graduate with the region's diplomas at the same rate as our general population because we believe profoundly in inclusion, and we're going to work as hard as we can to meet your son's needs. I can promise you that. I don't know what that's going to mean, but we are not going to leave any stone unturned to try to make sure his needs are met. And I would say this to any parent, because it's what we believe. It's the core of who we are. So know that. And know that I, there's nobody here that would ever disagree. Our rule is if it's not good for all kids, we don't do it. So we're going to work as hard as we can to make sure our son gets what he needs. We have lots of other things to talk about. I invite you to stay tonight because it might actually give you a sense of our challenges. We're going to do a budget presentation tonight. Since the last time we met, just to say out loud, because I think this is a critical point in case you don't stay, we had budgeted six new positions based on growing enrollment. One of those was for a new, we now call it a PACE program, but it's for our most severely disabled children who are likely going to go on to life skills programs. We added a section at the high school for the proposed budget. Since last we met, even the board is not fully aware of this, I've had to add a new self-contained kindergarten class for incoming preschool. That is a 1211 that will require another unbudgeted teacher, teacher assistant, and teacher aide. We're always looking. We're not only looking within, we're looking at all of the preschools and trying to prepare for those kids to be ready. So Timothy, with that, I know we're going to cover expenditures tonight. You're on, or am I starting you off?
Yeah, I think you'll start, and then I'll jump in after you.
Thank you so much for giving me more work to do. Appreciate it.
Okay.
So I like to remind people, those of you who've watched before at home, I apologize for being repetitive, but if you're new, school districts do not get to do what they want to do. They are stuck within a formula called the tax levy cap, and that determines how much you can spend. So for many years, we have struggled with how do we advance program while living within the tax levy cap? The misunderstanding that it's 2%, it's a bunch of variables that determine how much you can tax in a given year. So we are struggling right now because we have a growing enrollment, which is unlike any other school district in Westchester County at this time, and we have unprecedented development, and we're happy to deal with that, but it does require a lot of long-term planning and choices. We are a world language program away at the elementary school from becoming a full IB district, but IB will not allow us to enter unless we can fund a world language program at the elementary school. So that is also one of our goals. You will see up there, the last bullet is, "I've built a school system over the last 22 years that is predicated on trying to see every child as unique and being responsive to their individual needs to the extent possible, and we have succeeded in ways that no one would have ever expected." IB ranks us in the top 2% of academic performing IB high schools in the world, and that is unique because we let every single child participate. There are no prerequisites for participating in our most advanced programs. We invite you in and we support you in that program. My priorities really never change. We have to figure out how to build the program every year based on the kids in front of us, so nothing is stagnant. We're adding two programs because the needs exist. They didn't exist last year. When those needs go away, that money will be redeployed in some other way. We're constantly looking at multiple measures. You mentioned three exams. We look at way more than exams. We look at social and emotional well-being. We look at data that our principals collect and who's having lots of interactions with other kids and who's not, who's feeling isolated and who's not. We also do look at test scores because we don't like the model that kids are sometimes identified as the problem, so we don't use the term achievement gap because achievement gaps reflect a deficit on the child. We determine that as a learning gap because sometimes kids just haven't gotten there yet, and we try to fashion our programs using that information. So here's what we've been trying to do for several years. This is why I think building a system K-12 that uses the same instructional language is so important. So I picked the IB in 2001, before I was the superintendent, because I thought it offered a framework that was coherent. We're not telling your kids how to think, we're teaching them how to think. You've seen these words probably in your elementary schools, your middle schools, and your high schools. We're talking about how do you build people who want to be inquiring, who want to be knowledgeable, who are open-minded, caring, want to take risks, that means they have to feel safe and vulnerable, and that are balanced, principled, and reflective. That model is K-12. So when you hear instructional language in the elementary school, you're going to hear that same language in the middle school and in the high school. I always start with class sizes. We have the, among the lowest class sizes, Brian and I think we actually have the lowest class sizes in Westchester County, particularly at the elementary school. We target 22. On average, we're around 19, sometimes a little higher, sometimes a little lower. Middle and high school, about the same. There are occasionally sections at the high school, middle school, that are just larger, not very often, almost always lower. So this budget that we're talking about, and Tim's going to talk about expenditures tonight, maintains as priority number one, class size. The reason that we are so successful is teachers have enough time to spend with the needs of individual children in the classroom. As somebody who's taught at the high school, middle school level, sections up to 30, the experience for a child is dramatically different when a teacher is dealing with 18 to 22, particularly at the high school level. I mentioned earlier that we have growing enrollment. We have growing enrollment in two ways, people moving in, and we'll narrate some of that later. I think we picked up 112 kids in September, but we have a different problem at our high school. We have kids taking multiple courses in math, multiple science courses, and we're never going to say to a kid, no, you can't take more academic classes. Some kids only have lunch. Some kids, we try to advise them out of this, don't have lunch. They decide they want to eat lunch in class because they want to take advantage. It wasn't me, but it's them. We have lots of kids who take double math in ninth grade. So we have built lots of choices for kids and parents. We are seeing not only a growing enrollment in our high school, but growing participation. Some kids are even studying two languages. So two problems, more kids and kids wanting to take more program. I'm not going to ever complain about that. I mentioned the PACE program. It used to be called the PHASE program, but these kids are transitioning up to our high school. They will likely stay to us through age 22 and then be prepared for some kind of hopefully independent living experience. We need to add another section at our high school. That's in the current budget proposal. You'll hear about that, but that is certainly a priority. We are a district that believes in open access, so many kids can afford to pay for PSATs and AP exams and IB exams. Many kids cannot. Our district for the last 10 years has paid for all exam fees for all students. That remains a priority. We have one of the highest participation rates in the world. We'll see more about that later. If we are lucky enough, and we can fit it into the budget, but this is an if, we will introduce Phase 1 of the Elementary World Language Programs in the four elementary schools. That'll require two positions. We're not sure if we're going to be able to afford that yet, but that is necessary for us to get full approval to become the only K-12 IB district in this area. Unfortunately, there is some bad news in this budget. The federal money granted under COVID is scaling out. We did a lot of good things with it. We added air conditioning to lots of buildings. We're continuing to do that, but what it really provided was this incredible opportunity to have an expansive summer program, and we've had very high participation rates with kids, particularly around the curiosity camps. All of those are going away, unfortunately. We just can't fund them. It was money we used to try to sort of reignite people and kids in their interest in school and learning, and it worked really well. We'd love to keep it, but we can't afford to. We are going to keep select pieces. So our struggling readers participate in something called, what just went out of my head?
Bridges.
Bridges to Literacy, thank you. And Bridges to Literacy will remain intact, so that's for our neediest readers, K-3. We're going to have a program in the middle school for the kids that struggle academically. It's sort of like a summer school, but not really, because it's, can't call it that. And then the high school will maintain its summer school. And then we have some programs that have such high participation rates, we're never going to let them go. We have a college essay writing experience for rising seniors. So last year, we had 81 kids get their college essay done before September. Those things will survive, but by and large, the program that we had, which was over 40 programs deep, is going to be downsized dramatically. So doesn't make us happy, but the reality is the reality. Do I have a happy kid that looks like that behind me now? Enrollment growth, staffing needs, K-12, that's what's driving the budget. I have a degree in English literature and a doctorate in organizational leadership, but I've sat as the chairman of the Healthcare Consortium of 23 school districts for the last 17 years. We have managed to keep the costs really, really low. So the average last year was 18%. Our increase was 5%. This year, it's caught up to us, and our increase in health insurance will be over 10%. That alone will drive $2.1 million of new money necessary to meet the basic costs of running the district. Transportation, we're being pushed to electric buses, which I think is a good thing, but there's an inherent cost that we are being passed along by the transportation companies because they're going to have to transition. Our increase went up 28% last year, and we've leveled it off, but the next few years are going to be very daunting. All of those things have to be answered within this little tiny bandwidth called the tax levy cap, and we'll show you how much money we are allowed to raise. But I just mentioned for one example, the health insurance line is $2.1 million. That absorbs more than 70% of what we're allowed to spend. So other than that, it's a fun job. We love what we do. Tim, come on, get up here and tell them the rest of the story.
Okay, thank you. You'll probably want to add a little context here, Dr. Wool, but I'll start off, as was just mentioned by Lou, you know, we started the year kind of behind the eight ball. We knew at the beginning of September, we had significant enrollment increases. Brian will talk about that in a little bit, but generally speaking, it was over 100 students. And we knew right off the bat, we had to add two elementary teachers and six teaching aides, which support our special education students.
That were not budgeted.
Not budgeted, correct.
That means those people arrived after our budget was drawn and developed.
So we, you know, we planned for instances like this during the year, but what that means is now we have to budget for that, not only for this current year, but we have to add them into the budget for next year. So again, that adds to any new positions that we are trying to initiate for the following year. As you can see, for '24-'25, we do have quite a few projected new positions. Many of these come as a direct result of increasing enrollment. Dr. Wool, do you want to jump in on the elementary special ed?
I do. I want to talk about that. So we already have three positions that we anticipate. Those are special education, general education, but you know how many schools we have. Dr. Leydwick monitors class sizes every day. We have about eight classes right now, grade levels, that are two kids away from needing another teacher. What are the odds of getting two kids? The way enrollment is surging, pretty high. We used to be able to budget up to four unanticipated positions. Right now, we're down to one. We had budgeted two. We've already used one, and the budget isn't even developed yet. So I'm not saying this to scare you. I'm saying, I want you to understand our challenge when we're trying to craft I'm saying, I want you to understand our challenge when we're trying to craft a balanced budget. If we live within the cap, something has to go. So, class sizes, for me, are most critical. For teachers to do their work, they have to have a reasonable class size. So, that one FTE which is highlighted, last week said two because one of those positions jumped to that top line. That's the new kindergarten, special education class. So, right now, I will promise you this, we will need more than one unanticipated position. If enrollment trends the way it's currently trending, it could be as many as five.
Okay. So, as was mentioned earlier, we do have two positions budgeted for Elementary World Language Program. .5 FTE and a psychologist to meet various needs at elementary schools. And .4 science research. This is to support our current science research program that's very, very successful and popular with students, but we do, it is a good problem to have again, that we have so many students. One teacher is just not enough to keep up with the amount of work and the commitment and the support that's needed.
And as we develop more and more Regeneron semifinalists, more and more kids want to do it, which is a good problem. That's what I was talking about, the double science. Kids are taking two sciences, and we're not going to say no to that. We're just going to figure out how to support them.
And again, that 1.0 teaching assistant, you know, when you add a special education class, usually that comes with support from a teaching assistant. So, we do have one budget to support the special education program. We may need to add one more, as this was talked about by Dr. Will at the Parsons School next year. We do believe that's, it's going to be necessary. So, that one's not even in, in our current budget that we've been, that we've given to the board so far. Altogether, 15.9 positions, if you count the eight that were added at the beginning of the year, plus the additional ones for next year. All in all, this represents approximately about $1.4 million in additional costs next year that would have to be added to the budget. Okay. So, as was said earlier, let's just talk a little bit about the two main kind of buckets of expenses that we have. We have obviously our employee costs, which represent salary, employee benefits. You can imagine the majority of our costs in our school system is centered around employees. We are a people business, and that is over 70% of our costs each year. So, employee costs next year will increase by about 2.2 million. Again, the majority of this is due to the 15.9 new positions that we have scheduled for increased enrollment. Teacher and employee retirement plans. We have pretty significant increases that New York State administers for retirement plans for next year. And again, the two big buckets really are health insurance and retiree Medicare. As Dr. Will said, that will increase by 10% next year, and that's $2 million. It's, that's driving the significant portion of our general fund for the following year.
And Tim, just for those that are hearing this for the first time, nothing on that left side is optional. So, we are mandated to pay the retirement costs that are demanded of us by New York State. That's a number that we are sent and we must fund it. That is the law. Obviously, health insurance is within our control, but it's much lower than most of the surrounding districts in the state plan. For example, our increase is 10%, but the state plan is 16. So, not great, but better.
And I think you'll hear that as a trend nationwide. We were talking about this earlier. Car insurance, and if you saw your renewals coming up in the spring or recently, you'll see double-digit increases. And this is a, this is really a trend for liability and property insurance that you'll see on the right-hand side under operational costs. Health insurance is in the same category. The inflationary increases and pressures that we see around insurance right now are really off the charts. Going back to the operational costs on the right-hand side, as Dr. Will mentioned earlier, our transportation contract with First Student, unfortunately, we saw a very large increase last year, 21%. For the next three years, it'll be 5%, which is much less. But, still, 5% of our budget is about $400,000. So, it's not an insignificant amount by any means. Electricity, natural gas. We just continue to see extreme inflationary pressures on our utility costs. And this is very similar to our local property owners and community members as they see these costs continue to escalate. We just hope for a year where this can equalize to some degree. And we've taken some steps with the Facilities Committee to look into an energy performance contract, which would look to utilize different types of economy measures, solar panels, to be able to reduce our electricity load. So, we are looking forward to that, optimistic that that will help relieve some of the stress and pressure.
I'm going to just jump into a little bit about transportation because sometimes people compare school budgets neighbor to neighbor. So, Mamaronek transports his children on the Beeline buses. They don't run buses. Rye City does not transport any kids, so they don't have a transportation cost built in. And many of the other districts have much shorter distances. So, we transport more kids than we are required to because many years ago, our community said, "We want you to transport more kids because of the lack of sidewalks." So, there are lots of things in a school budget that when people look side by side are hard to understand.
Okay. So, looking at our draft expenditure budget, all New York State public schools must present their annual budget in a very prescribed manner, and that's prescribed by the New York State Education Department. We are to show our budget in three main components or categories, being the program, the administrative, and the capital components. And I won't read all of those, all of those explanations underneath there, but you can see, obviously, the program is pretty self-explanatory. It's where all of our teachers are, anything to do with the instructional program, textbooks, psychological, athletics, transportation, anything you can think of that would support the educational program is really in that, in that program component. The administrative component, obviously, is our, is our principals, our central administrative team, viability insurance, legal services, all the things that, you know, you would think to, to support the operational aspects of the district. And then, the capital, all of our buildings and grounds employees, capital improvements, water sewer, utilities. So, right off the bat, you can notice that, you know, we're seeing a 4.5% increase in our program component. Again, that's strictly driven by increased enrollment, increased staff, and increased health insurance and other employee benefits. And it's one of those years where, you know, it seems like it's a perfect storm. Not only do we have increases in, in these employee costs, but we're also seeing increases in enrollment, which really drives that up more than, more than usual. Administering capital, again, those are about the same in terms of a percentage increase, but again, those are strictly driven by really employee benefit costs. That's mostly health insurance in there and utilities. All in all, the budget is, the draft budget is scheduled to go up by 4.4%, which is about And this chart is kind of interesting because, you know, we try to look at what our budget increases have been over a series of years compared to the CPI. For those who don't know what the CPI is, but it stands for Consumer Price Index, and it's, it's a measure of inflation. And we look at this because we try to, we try to develop our budget that has the same type of increases that you would expect from an inflationary factor. And for the most part, we've been very, very close to the average CPI. In fact, we've been below the average CPI over the series of about nine years. Because again, relatively close to inflation. And this is interesting because the counterpoint to the relationship between the budget increases to the CPI is the tax levy increases to the CPI. And again, for those who don't know, the tax levy is the, is the total amount that we collect from taxpayers to support the annual budget. And you can see here that you could expect budget increases to be more consistent with the CPI and with economic realities of the country, but because of the New York State tax cap, you're seeing that the average levy increase does not keep up with CPI. And, you know, we're significantly restricted from generating enough revenue to keep up with these inflationary pressures. So, this is really a good metric here that we look at. Now, this is fine over a short period of time because we can, we can maneuver the budget so, so that we can keep up with some of these pressures. But, over a long period of time, this is significantly problematic for us to be able to keep up and with our instructional programs and not have to have us do extensive tax increases.
Well, let me say it in non-financial terms, just from my perspective, because, you know, my goal is, how do we at least maintain what we have? Well, the cost of maintaining what we have does not remain stable. It goes up. And if you want to look at a dire circumstance, as a district in northern Westchester right now, talking about getting rid of kindergarten. And the reason for that is their school board was not as forward-thinking as this one. We have always tried to prepare for reasonable growth. If you stay as low as you possibly can and balance your budget using reserves, what you're really doing is you're creating a permanent hole in your budget, and at one point, you won't have those reserves. And then, you're going to be faced with what they're faced with now, which is a $6 million deficit. So, our problem right now, as Tim said, is we're really good at sort of surfing this wave, maintaining what we have. What has happened is the spike in enrollment has made that not viable if we're going to just sustain what we have. Because no one could have anticipated that while birth rates nationally are going down and all over Westchester are going down, in Harrison, they're going straight up. Good problem. We're happy people want to live here, but in order to sustain the quality of the program we have, it will cost more money. There are no magic tricks. If you add a teacher, you add cost. If you don't add a teacher, you raise class sizes. For me, our results are linked to our approach. So, all of these things are money, but they're also, and this is what it's hard for, the average taxpayer who doesn't have kids in school tells me a different story. Please don't raise my taxes, which I understand. On the other hand, the value of your home is intrinsically linked to the quality of your schools. And so, we try to be really mindful. We don't want to add unnecessary burden to the taxpayer. At the same time, we have an obligation to maintain the quality of education that we currently offer. And so, that's, that's the sweet spot.
Yep. Very good. Okay. The other thing that we take a lot of pride on and makes, we, we try to make significant improvements in our annual capital budget and upgrades each year. So, as we do every year, we spend a lot of time with our school principals to generate a list of items that we can accomplish over the summer, and we only have a very short window. We have two months. So, as soon as school's out, until school begins again in September, we hit the ground running and we don't let up for two months to try to make as many improvements as we possibly can. Here are some of the things we have planned for the summer. The Purchase Elementary School will see a partial roof replacement. Preston Auditorium, we hope to do, we hope to do some chair renovations and improvements in those areas. Again, we do classroom floor tile replacements in all schools every year, but we have a series of floors picked out for that. We have some utility and electric switchgear at the high school that we would like to upgrade. Parsons has a retaining well near the playground that we plan to do some repairs on, some boiler efficiency upgrades, multiple heating, ventilation, HVAC upgrades in every building. And we have some various roof and building envelope repairs to make our buildings more energy efficient and watertight. So, all in all, we have been, for the last few years, budget about $2 million for our capital budget, and that's a transfer we make to the capital fund from the general fund. So, we're...
And sometimes it gets fuzzy if you're new to this. So, the bond is like a separate thing entirely. This part of the money comes from within our annual budget. This is basically, think of it as maintenance on your house. These are the basic things we have to do to keep the building safe. The bond really addresses the bigger things that we can't do within an annual budget. And we're going to talk about that right now.
That's a good segue. You want to take this?
Okay. So, you know that you recently supported a bond, and we thanked the community for that. I think it was really necessary. And school districts not have the same flexibility as the, as the town. So, you may notice that the Recreation Center, three people on the town board say, "Yes, they can bond and they can build. They don't have to get approvals from anybody." For this, for the district, we have to go to the community with a package and says, "This is exactly what we're going to build, and this is why." With a cost attached to it, you say yes. Now that you said yes, we take our architects, our construction management folks. They have to submit all those plans to state ed. The review period typically is eight months to a year. When you get that approval, then you can put it out to bid. That takes another six to eight months, and then you can finally start to build. So, building a school takes about four years. So, we are going as fast as we can and doing as much as we can. Having said that, some of the work that we put into the bond will start this summer, particularly, one of my key issues is security. So, we are looking at all kinds of options for securing windows. We haven't landed on one. Film is the one that most people land on. We're looking at some other things. And each school is being assessed differently because they all find themselves in different circumstances. If you have a ground-level window, clearly, you're more vulnerable than the window is five feet high. So, we're looking at all those things. The additional cameras will be added throughout the district this, this year. Expanded and improved door access. We already know when a door is open, it'll give us greater flexibility to deal with all those issues from the administrators' phones, and we'll have more real-time information on that. You know, over at Purchase School, you have a bunch of portable classrooms. Those are going to get moved around during the construction phase. We also have two of those rooms where we do all of our professional development for all 340 teachers. So, we'll have no place to do that when those portables go away because you guys have gotten so big, we need that room for school. So, we're going to be building a large 2,500-square-foot multipurpose center here. Scott, the middle school principal, will use it as classrooms during the day if he needs, or a large group instructional space, and we'll use it for PD in the summer. Our own crew is going to begin that work this summer. That's a project we'll do in-house. We're also going to start to move the playground and the basketball court over at Purchase School this summer behind where the new building will be. And we're going to pull two of the portables away because we have to start construction there and put them next to the gymnasium. All of that site work, which is in preparation for the real work, will be happening. Hopefully, this summer, we'll also start the window upgrades district-wide on the security side. You want me to do this one too?
Yeah. I mean, we...
Thank you, Tim.
I don't, I don't mind.
No, I feel like talking tonight.
Okay, go for it.
Phase two of the bond, '25 to '27. You see those years? Here we are seeing in '24, what's going to take so long? Approval. We're trying to fast-track some of these things. Harrison Avenue has an entrance that I'm not pleased with. We may do some of that work this summer. But, all of the elementary schools are going to be reconfigured to have what are called man traps, and it seems gender biased to me, but person traps, so that people can't enter the building without being carefully vetted and viewed before they, they enter. You know what else is going on in some of these schools. Purchase is getting classrooms, cafeteria addition. The old cafeteria is going to be repurposed into a music suite, lots of other things going on there on the exterior. Parsons, which is blowing up in enrollment, it's more, the two schools that are experiencing the most enrollment growth are the Purchase Elementary School and the Parsons School. That's where most of the new building is occurring. You'll see more about that later. Dr. Leidwig will narrate for you where it's all occurring. But, Parsons is actually landlocked. It's our oldest building, built in 1890. We're blowing up the roof and adding a third floor because we can only go up. And we're finally going to make that building, which has over 1,000 stairs in it, fully handicapped accessible. So, you can't currently get to the third floor if you're a handicapped child. Harrison Avenue is inexplicable to us because there's no building going on, and Harrison Avenue is the fastest-growing school. It's slated to go over 700 in the near future. So, we are adding a three-story addition in the back. It's classrooms, library, and their music now occurs in a stairwell behind the gymnasium. So, we're going to fix that. Preston is completely handicapped, inaccessible, and we're going to solve that riddle. And Preston, I don't believe the data because what's happening in Preston is a phenomenon that the demographer cannot track. Single-family houses are being sold and knocked down, and four-family houses are going up in place of those. So, it's hard to anticipate that. But, Preston School right now is out of classroom space already. So, we are building classrooms there. We're going to get the music out of the portables. Their portables are 35 years old. They had a useful life in theory of 15 years. So, we're going to fix that problem. And they also have a handicapped access issue. You can't get to the kindergarten wing if you're handicapped. So, we'll be fixing all of that. Harrison High, this is the only building that isn't going to get as much. This is the building that got most last time. So, it's, it's in pretty good shape, and we can accommodate more kids here. The high school's out of room right now. We're going to be adding four more classrooms to what is called the Rose Garden Wing. We're going to be adding a new Science STEM Center. The last time the Science Room was updated was in 1974, which is a long time ago. I won't say who Garrett graduated high school in 1974. So, that's a little outdated. I won't say who Garrett graduated high school in 1974, so that's a little outdated. We need a turf field, because the baseball field is used so often, we can't regenerate the grass, which doesn't make it safe, really. The fitness center is a, is a great problem. Our high school fitness program, it's not related to sports, it's health and wellness, is so well utilized, it runs all year round, and it can't accommodate the kids that use it now, so it's going to triple in size. And we're also going to be adding, I didn't mention, that's it, covered it all. And all of that will happen within the '25-'27 envelope, but priority one and two, our Purchase and Parsons go first, because they're having the most impact.
Sounds good.
I think, Dr. Liederman, you're on.
Absolutely.
You've heard this enough, is that what you're really saying? Have a good night.
Well, I get the pleasure of sharing the good news story that also carries with it a challenge. The good news is, as you've alluded to already, Dr. Wool, we have so much building going on in our community, new families moving here, which we think is a real strength of our community, that it's that desirable to families, and we think that's partly attributable to the school district. The challenge, of course, is planning for those children, and where that's especially challenging is, we can't predict nor can we control what school and what grade level new children move into the district. If we could distribute them evenly, that would be easier, but we don't get that luxury. So we're constantly trying to predict the future and plan for that, and we look at that through a couple of different lenses. So we've talked a little bit tonight about the importance of class size averages and how we maintain them, and we do that very intentionally, because what we know is that teachers do their best work in personalizing learning for kids when they can see every child, work with every child in a sustainable way throughout the course of every school day. That's very difficult to do when you have 24, 25, 26, 27, in some neighboring districts, 28 or 30 students in a class. So just to give you a snapshot, K-5, we have 19.9 students on average, middle school 20.8, high school 19.5. And obviously, part of delivering on our commitment to the community and to our families and students in terms of the program that we provide is ensuring that we maintain those class sizes. So we're very protective of those as we think we need to be.
And the only thing I would add to that, and we maybe should think about sharing the data more, many of these classes are co-taught. So when you see a class that says 19.9, and there are two teachers in it, it's actually much more impactful than it would appear, because, and we're really very mindful of how we place literally individual kids, because some kids have a higher need for a lower class size, and some kids, their disability is not that challenging for a teacher to integrate them in effectively. So all of those variables are considered when we do class size development.
When we try to track enrollment, you know, it's an interesting thing that many of our neighboring districts are reporting steady decreases. Not a single year, which would be an anomaly, but steady decreases over multiple years with their enrollment. We're seeing the opposite. We're growing quite a bit. So there's a lot of numbers here, but I'll highlight just a few things to reference, if this is visible. So in the '22-'23 school year, we had 3,624 students in the district. We were demographically projected to have 3,662, and in fact, we, in September, had 3,733. So we actually had, picked up 109 students from June to September. That's pretty substantial growth. I should mention, we're actually seven students higher than 3,733. As of today, we're 3,740.
Will you fix that number?
I will. I'd have to change it every day, because it changes by, you know, that much. But that number, 3,733, is, was a demographically projected increase of 71 students. So consider that, in all those communities around us where the numbers are going down in their enrollment, we were projected to be up by 71, in fact. We were up by 109, and if you add the seven that are actually 3,740, we're up by 116 students since June. So that's a significant number, when you consider that one or two students at a grade level in a school can tip you over the class size limit that we feel comfortable with and would necessitate adding another section. So that certainly presents challenges for us, but obviously, it's born out of that good news story that I mentioned. So as we look ahead to the future, we engage the services of a demographer, who is skilled at using a number of different metrics to try to predict future enrollment. They look at things like birth rates, they look at construction that's happening in the community, they try to look at what's called migration patterns, meaning how many families move in and how many families move out in a year, and based on that, they try to model the future. It's an inexact science, even by their own admission, because there are things that they just can't predict. But as you can see, that 3,662, which is where we were at the start of this year, or rather, at the end of last year, and you can see those numbers steadily going up. So that projection out to 2033 has us, as you can see, over 4,100 students. So trying to plan for that from a, from not only a classroom space standpoint, but also a staffing standpoint, we can build the classrooms, but we obviously have to have the teachers and others to put in them as well. So again, the upward trend here is what we're trying to plan for. This is a little maybe dizzying, but these are our four elementary schools, so blue is Harrison Avenue. That center column that you see sort of highlighted in black is where we are right now. Everything to the left of that is the prior 10 years or so, everything to the right of that is the future 10 years. So as you can see, Harrison Avenue is projected to go up steadily before leveling off. Red is Parsons, obviously going up quite a bit to a all-time-high watermark as well. Green is Purchase School, so you can see, sitting at 366, in just a few years, projected to be up to 446. So those numbers certainly present some challenges for us, both in terms of space and staffing. And the yellow is, is Preston. Now Preston shows to appear fairly flat, but with some of the housing turnover that we're seeing, which by the way, demographers are not as good at predicting. So by housing turnover, we mean older families who don't have children moving out, younger families moving in who have children, those children come to our schools.
And we have lots of evidence of that in the Harrison Avenue zone, because there is no building. So that's all inward migration, people selling and moving in with kids.
That's right. At the middle and high school level, so blue is Harrison High School, we're at about, just about 1,100 students, 1,098. The, the dip that you see in next year, 1,042, that's actually because the exiting senior class is a little bit larger than the incoming freshman class, and that incoming freshman class is a little bit smaller than normal, but the sixth and seventh grade classes soon to follow are among the largest historically that we've had at the grade level. So as you can see, the projections going well into the future show those numbers increasing substantially. The middle school, a similar story, as you can see, 866 right now, and eventually, a high watermark of 1,057. As you mentioned, Dr. Wool, we have a little bit more flexibility with space in the middle school, so it's not as imminent a building challenge, but it will become a staffing challenge for sure.
It certainly will.
Annual birth rates in the town of Harrison, we track this number, our demographers track this number. As you can see, it's been fairly constant with some fluctuations. The 2021 number at 261 is, is obviously a high number on that timeline. We don't know if that will be sustained, if that number will come back down, we know it fluctuates. But we do try to track that, and our demographers are looking at that as well, because for every child that's born, we can predict five years hence, we'll see them in kindergarten. We track building development in town to try to know where the likely new housing will produce more students, and depending on the part of the community, there's different levels of building going. In Harrison Avenue, as we've said, almost no new building happening, but a lot happening in the Purchase community. The Renaissance Hotel is one example, being turned into condominiums with 736 units. Now, some of those will be one-bedroom places that will not likely generate children in our schools, but many of them likely will that have more bedrooms. So these are just the larger of the new developments that are happening in our community. Obviously, I'm not listing here all of those single-family homes that become 2, 3, 4-family homes with demolition and rebuilding. But as you can see, 1,600 new residential units in town coming online in various states of completion. So trying to work closely with the town to predict how many bedrooms are in those units, and thereby, how many students may we be able to predict. Again, an inexact science, but one we try to track, because it's one of the better indicators to tell us where new pockets of student enrollment growth may occur. Another interesting data point that we track, that we think tells an interesting story. So we also track the percentage or the number of Harrison students who live in our community but who attend private school. And as you can see, in 2013-14, all the way on the left, we had just shy of 25% of the school-aged children who lived in the town of Harrison were attending a private school. And as you can see, over time, that number has steadily come down, such that this year we're at 17.37%. That could be for a number of reasons. I think families may look at the offerings of Harrison High School, for example, and realize that it's a very internationally-recognized school with a rich array of offerings, from extracurriculars to sports, to academics, to college preparedness. That may be drawing families and their kids back from private school. But as you can see, that number, that percentage at 17%, where it used to be at 25, those kids are coming back to us, right? So again, a good news story for Harrison. We think it's because of the success of our schools, but obviously, something that we have to work very hard to try to plan and predict for.
And it's a cultural phenomenon. So I study school culture as one of my many interests, and we are the only school system that I can find in this region where the, and you can take any school district you can think of in your head. Public school enrollment stays the same, goes up a little bit, but private school enrollment never goes down, because it's legacy. Your parents went to private school, you tend to go to private school. We have bent that curve, and I would credit the quality of our programs for doing that, because you, the kids live together, they know what other kids are getting and their experience, and we have seen more and more kids who traditionally would have gone to private school returning. So that's a good news story, as Brian said, but it also exacerbates our enrollment challenge.
That'll turn it back to Tim.
And here's the magic story. This is the tax levy limit, and you'll understand the formula and what we are allowed to do versus what we might want to do.
Yeah, and we went over this last time, and obviously, the board is well aware of the formula, but for our guests here in the audience-
You've picked up 1,000 viewers, though, since last time.
There you go. So this is good.
They're all new.
So the tax levy limit is a calculation that we use that's referenced by the state of New York, and every school district has an individual calculation that they go through on a year-by-year basis, with really two main factors, and those are the ones I've highlighted in yellow. Tax-based growth factor is, represents assessment growth in our community. So what that means for us is that between the years of 2021 and '22, we had significant assessment growth and building development in the town of Harrison. The other, the other item, and we talked about this earlier, even though the actual CPI is 4.12 over the past year, and again, CPI is a measure of inflation, the state says that we are capped by the lesser of CPI or 2%. So you can see there, even though CPI was four, we're capped by 2%, and that significantly limits our ability to raise additional revenue to, to meet our, our expenses, especially with enrollment growth. There's absolutely no provision in the tax levy limit calculation that allows us to increase the amount we collect from our taxpayers for enrollment growth based on student population. So at the end of the day, as we kind of mentioned earlier, after the formula has run, the total amount that we're able to increase the tax levy, and again, the tax levy is the amount we collect from our taxpayers, is 3.7 million, or about 3.1%. So our current-year levy is 118 million, the maximum allowable levy is 122 next year. That's $3.7 million increase. And if you remember, going back to the earlier slides where we talked about expenses, right now, our expenditure increases are about 5.9 million. So obviously, we still have a whole other piece, and we'll talk about this at our next meeting in terms of revenue. You know, how do you meet the gap between what we're allowed to collect from our taxpayers and what our expenses are? And we'll go through fund balance, we'll go through state aid increases, all those type of things. But at this point, you know, it's, it's pretty significant budget gap that we do have to try to fill. We're working as hard as we can to try to meet those, those, those demands, and at our next meeting, we'll talk more about that with the board and how we plan to do that.
Thank you so much, Tim. Does anyone have any questions for Tim? I know the budget, many, the budget committee's been through this a number of times. I do want to add, just for people who are watching or with us here, to let them know a number of the things that Tim and Lou mentioned about challenges with this. We, as a board, are engaged in advocacy work, we are in touch with our state legislatures. There are, there are things that could be done to solve some of these problems. Other states that have tax cap formulas have a place in them that allows for enrollment growth. That's not, as Tim said, that's not something that the New York State formula allows for. The other real challenge that he pointed out is, in an environment where inflation is over 4%, but we're limited to 2%, it's really hard to understand the, the thought process that would going in, would go into saying to a school, you need to figure out how to live in a, in a way that no one else in your community, your state, the country, is living. So we are, we are working on that, advocating for that, and doing the very best we can to hopefully make some changes.
And just, would you remind folks we're going to do this at every PTA meeting?
Yes, and as a reminder, and we will share this information through the PTAs, through the PT Council, all of this information will be on our district website, but we will be doing a full budget presentation, which will include both the revenue side and the expense side, the entire budget at every PTA meeting in May. And people are welcome, if you can't make one meeting, you're welcome to come to a meeting at a different school, and we really encourage people to attend those. There will be members of the Board Budget Committee will be there, Dr. Wool will be there, Tim will be there, I'm sure Brian will be, lots of people will be there. And it's a great opportunity for questions and answers. We really go through, we'll talk, and at each school, also talk very specifically about some of the impacts on those school buildings. I also want to say thank you for that presentation, and I forgot to share that the, the IB Art exhibit will be happening tomorrow at Harrison High School, and if you are an elementary school parent, and you're interested to see what your elementary school artist might be able to accomplish when they get to Harrison High School, you will want to go take a look at that. That's from 3:00 to 6:00 p.m. In addition, the, the board will be acting on some policies, and Mrs. Jaberga, who chairs the policy committee, couldn't be here, but I just wanted to give an update that the policy subcommittee recently completed its review of two policies, which are in the 7,000 series. Policy 7250 relates to student privacy in relation to surveys, collection of data, and parental access to information pursuant to the protection of pupil rights amendment, the PPR, as well as 7512, which are student physicals. The Board of Education will be doing a first reading of these revised policies this evening. That committee consists of myself, Mrs. Jaberga, and Mr. Blauvstein, so we have reviewed those. And with that, we will move on to the personnel report, which I will take on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. Item A, certificated personnel, one, regular appointment, SED clearance received. Two, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Three, change of status. Four, leave of absence without pay. B, non-certificated personnel, one, resignation. Two, regular appointment, SED clearance submitted. Three, temporary appointment, SED clearance received. Four, extra compensation appointment, SED clearance received. Five, change of status. C, other. One, contracted service provider. Two, student/teacher. Do I have a motion to approve the personnel report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the administrative report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, approval of revised policy, 7250, student privacy in relation to surveys, collection of data, and parental access to information pursuant to the protection of pupil rights amendment, PPR, and 7512, student physicals. B, approval of supplemental memorandum of agreement. C, approval of Harrison High School varsity girls lacrosse team to travel to Philadelphia, Pennsylvania for a scrimmage. D, acceptance of Harrison Educational Foundation grant. E, acceptance of donation from the Black Bowed Giving Fund on behalf of New York Life and its donors. F, acceptance of donation from the Samuel J. Preston PTA. G, acceptance of donation from the Harrison Avenue School PTA. H, acceptance of donation from the Joseph Lem Memorial Foundation. I, acceptance of donation from the Harrison High School Varsity Sock Lacks Booster Club. G, acceptance of donation to establish the All Saints Church Peter Sutjak Memorial Scholarship Fund. K, approval of CSC CPSC minutes. L, approval of CSC CPSC recommendations. M, approval of CSC CPSC annual reviews. Do I have a motion to approve the administration- Do I have a motion to approve the administrative report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Just on behalf of the entire Board of Education, I'd like to thank all of the many people who have exhibited great generosity to the district. We received from the Harrison Educational Foundation earlier, I also want to thank our PTAs at Preston and Harrison Avenue, and also those who support scholarships that go to our high school graduating seniors, the Joseph Lem Memorial Foundation, as well as All Saints Church. And a special thank you as well to the Varsity Sock Lacks Booster Club. I believe that's soccer and lacrosse combined, which is a really nice thing. And the girls' lacrosse team is being supported in their travel to a scrimmage. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. Moving on to the finance and facilities report, I'll take that on consent unless anyone objects. Seeing none. A, 2024-25 agreement with Students Assistance Services Corp. B, contract for health services, Elmsford Union Free School District. C, contract for health services, Mamaroneck Union Free School District. D, approval of contract with the County of Westchester. E, approval of contracts to provide pass-through funds for special education services. G, contract for health services, White Plains City School District. H, contract for health services, Katona Lewisboro Union Free School District. Did I forget one?
Somers.
Oh, I skipped over F. F, contract for health services, Somers CSD. Really takes a village here at the Board of Education. I, treasurer's report, February 2024. J, resolution calling the 2024 annual district meeting and election of the Harrison Central School District and authorizing related matters. K, contract for health services, Greenberg Central School District. L, 2023-24 appropriation transfers. M, contract for health services, Ry City School District. N, contract for health services, Scarsdale Public Schools. O, resolution pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act determining that proposed investigatory work at Lewis M. Klein Middle School and 90 Union Avenue is a Type II action and not subject to further review. P, tax sorceress Pasquale Casale et al., tax map number 611-22. Q, resolution to increase 2023-24 budget appropriations. R, authorization to piggyback on the White Plains City School District bid award for pump system repairs. S, Putnam Northern Westchester BOSI's cooperative bidding. Do I have a motion to approve the finance and facilities report?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? There are none. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Harrison Central School District Board of Education will take place April 10th, 2024, here at the Lewis M. Klein Middle School. As mentioned, schools are closed this week. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to wish a very happy Easter to all of those who celebrate. Do I have a motion to close the meeting?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned. Thank you.